Ethan God, we thank you so much for this night and we thank you more for just keeping us. Most of all, we ask that you would bless our school system and give us a mind to try to do what is right for our system. Not only do bad, but we ask that you would bless Sec and Cheryn all over this land and country in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Item number three, except the minutes of January fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Me, recommended being approved. You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
I move.
Okay, Reverend Green, is there a second? Dr. Price, any comment? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose is nay. Motion carries. Item number four, hearing of dedication and communications. At this time, if anyone in the audience would like to say something, I have something to say, you can do so at this time. Hearing none, that was it.
A number of items under communications. One, I think I sent everybody an email regarding the two point six million dollar P I M grant that we received. I'm gonna ask Mr. Knox and Dr. Ridge to come in the March meeting and present the details on that, but that's gonna, that's a, that's a very, very good grant for our school system. And so they'll come and present that, we're excited about, about what that's gonna do to some of our programs. One, you may remember that prior to COVID, we were approved for us to have what we call a Pike County homeschool consortium. And that was advised to reach out to homeschoolers and try to bring them into our system and let them know what services are available to their, to their kids. We had some success at that time and actually some of the, some of the kids that we made contact with actually, once they, once they had a taste of our system, actually liked it and made actually be capable of times students with us over time. So we, we brought that back, we've kind of rebranded it under something called Connect Pike County or Pike County Connects. And we had two meetings last week and I believe the first, the first night, we had three homeschoolers there and the second night, there was nine. So we don't, we don't know whether any of those parents will make a decision to put their kids in our school system, but we have reached out to them. As you know, the legislative session has started and we, as always, we need to be attentive to what's going on in Montgomery. Of course, the big thing right now is the, is the choice bill and I have not had an opportunity to read the entire bill yet. I have had other superintendents email me about certain revisions of the bill that are of concern and I'm sure that A A S, the S S A, A E A class and all the different groups will work to try to, if it's going to pass it, we at least hope that some of those issues that are of concern are, are addressed in the language of the bill. There's also a, looks like there's going to be an opportunity for a gambling or lottery bill to pass this session that would give Alabama voters a chance to either give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down. And as you know, we've worked very hard over the last two or three years to get some very specific language in that bill that will, will direct some of the proceeds from that gambling bill, lottery bill to George, post-secondary dual enrollment not covered by workforce development funds. And so we had some success the last time we actually got our language in the bill. Helped Senator Chastain and Senator Hawley at that time. And we'll redo double our efforts to try to get, get some of that language included. If a bill passes, we've already, I've actually already started making some contacts related to that. Do want to mention that the discretionary money that Representative Paramore or Senator Carlin sent to us has been distributed to the schools and, and we just set aside just a little bit of money for our, some of our academy students, those in the International Studies Program of Troy University to participate in international travel. That's one of the things we thought was important. Part of the International Studies Academy was to give the kids a chance to travel and we'll give you some more details on that. It looks like it could be Puerto Rico, is that right? We're, we're working on that and we'll give you more details. You had in your package, A A S B snapshot in your, there's those. Just to let you know, the M O U S for the music industry, performance-based music industry program has been signed with Troy University, I believe.
They've given us a tentative.
Yeah, so it looks like that program is going to be a go. The unanswered questions right now relating to the music industry program is the, is where and what the schedule's gonna work, it's gonna look like. And we're going to work on, we're gonna work on that. We had a very productive meeting, I guess it was last week. With Troy University on the three plus one teacher education program and it looks like that's going to be something that happens. We're excited about it and give us an opportunity to put, get kids to an associate degree in tenth, eleventh through twelfth, then transition into a bachelor's program. We believe that is basically one year and then the year after that. Then it would be a year-long apprenticeship program. And then in, in return for us, helping them through that program post-graduation, if we choose to offer them a position in our school system, then they would be obligated to us. We haven't decided how many years yet, but kind of like what hospitals do to the nurses now. You got them to get through a program and then you're obligated to work at their facility. So we think it's gonna, it's, it's, has, is a program that can be replicated in other places and it looks like it might end up being one of three or four pathways that is gonna lead to, to address teacher, teacher shortages. One, you know, is a junior college program that's in the works. And the other is our early childhood apprenticeship program due to the Alabama Office of Apprenticeship. And this would give us a third one, but again, it'd be specific to our school system. So we're excited about that program. You have an email encouraging you to register and sign up for one of the A A S B legislative advocacy days. And I don't remember the date, District, District Three is, is going to Montgomery, but I would encourage you to sign up for one of these days and, and make a trip. District Three, April second. April second is District Three along with some other districts. Yeah, on, in April seventeenth. I would encourage you to sign up and go and, and participate in that and take the time to go to the State House and visit with Senator Carlin and visit with Representative Paramore. They need to, they need to hear from you as it relates to issues involving our school system. You know, they, I, I get a chance to talk to them off and off and they probably get tired of hearing from me sometimes. So it's good for them to hear, hear from you. So please take the time to sign up to go. I will mention that on March first and second, we're having our very own first annual teacher recruitment fair here. That's a Friday and Saturday. We've got a structure in place for, for candidates for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year to apply. We're gonna have everybody there to conduct interviews, it's gonna be kind of a rotating time and, and anything we can do to kind of get a jump on people that are out there. You have a pen in your packet, in a little thing in your packet. Recognizing that this year is A A S B seventy-fifth anniversary. I think that, I think that's, oh, 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 oh. Yeah, you have in your packet the taxes, tax sheet that you get every board meeting that gives you a rundown on what collections look like. And last but not least, we have got to go ahead and schedule whole board training. What is, what is, what is the wishes of the board as it relates to whole board training?
Because we have to coordinate dates with the chairman with us, so I need to know like what area you want to do. So I can call the chairman and see. It has to be done before you go in June or it has to be done by the end of May, I think.
Aprilish?
But I need to know which categories.
Do we have that somewhere this time like we did last month, Cindy?
I think I'll put it in your, in your cabinet.
How many hours is that?
I think it's, yeah.
Six hours?
I think so. No, no, the whole board is like two hours.
Two hours?
Two hours, but it's made in the board.
Yeah, okay. Do you remember it last year? It's another problem with a free book. What, can we look up when we did it last year?
Oh, yeah.
It was in May, I was actually in May.
This is our list.
Actually, yes, so that's what I need to know tonight so I can call them. They have to be available or we have to be in the show.
Do you want to, you want to look at, at maybe at three o'clock before April evening? And day two and then, and then we'll bring a sandwich or something and then we'll go straight into the board meeting. What is it?
I think it's the fifteenth.
April fifteenth?
That's the third month.
Third month.
The eighth fifteen, the twenty-second.
Take a look at your topics and maybe pick three and rank them. Pick three, rank them one, two, three, and then we'll, we'll, we'll look and see what the most favorite topic is and we will schedule that three o'clock, April fifteenth in advance of the April fifteenth board meeting. Is that okay? Is that okay? Would that be okay?
Yeah, that'd be fine, fifteenth.
If you're just like said, if you're just put numbers, do it on that sheet, give it to Cindy or you can mail it and then we'll schedule it.
October fifteenth.
Okay, all right, that's all I have.
Item number five, adoption of the agenda. Recommended being approved. You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion? Price, second? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay. Motion carries. That's item number six. Item seven, eight, approved financial statements for January twenty twenty-four. Recommended being approved. You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion? Mr. Wilks, is that second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Kett. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay. Motion carries. Item seven, B, approved policy five point, number one, A I policy. Doctor Zell.
Recommended.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion? Okay, Dr. Price, is there a second?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Harley, any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay. Motion carries. Item seven, C, approved request for Kingland Homes to travel to and attend a school psychometric training while the autism diagnosed observation scheduled to February twenty-sixth, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four in Alabama, Georgia. Fund will be by as, Doctor Zell.
Recommended.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
Amen.
Agent Jett, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Wilks, any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay. Motion carries. Item seven, D, approved request for Daniel Reeves to travel to and attend the psych security conference February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four in Alabama, Georgia. Fund will be by the Alabama State Department of Education.
Recommended.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
No.
Okay, Mr. Harley, is there a second? Okay, Reverend Green. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose has the same right. Motion carries. Seven, E, approved request for Mika Hertz to travel to and attend the Alabama Council for administrative special education spring conference this is February twenty-fifth, this is twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four in Birmingham, fund by I D.
I recommend.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion? Okay, Dr. Price, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Wilks, any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose has the same right. Motion carries. Page seven, F, approved request for Colleen Ewing, Kristen Stanley, and Jeremy Knox to travel to and attend the forum camp training eight fifteen, three nineteen, twenty twenty-four in Boston, Massachusetts. Funded by the school innovation grant, Doctor Zell.
I recommend.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
No.
Okay, Reverend Green, is there a second? Okay, Agent Harley, any questions, comments, concerns?
Isn't that a required three? Just serves for the freight farm that we're getting up there, so try and get a lot of that around here.
We didn't know about Colleen and Post.
It's words, it's words, mate. Break about clamshell.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose has the same right. Motion carries. Okay, seven, G, approved request for Shatoshua Levert, Beverly Williams to Jeremy Knox to travel to and attend the Alabama apprenticeship conference. Eight and eight, we attend twenty twenty-four in Birmingham. Apprenticeship program will be given funding by Title V and apprenticeship conference, Doctor Zell.
Recommended.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
No.
Okay, Mr. Wilks, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, okay. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose has the same right. Motion carries. Item seven, H, approved request for Jeremy Knox to travel to and attend the Association of Career Technical Education Work-Based Learning Conference April thirty, April twenty-four, twenty twenty-four in Milwaukee, Georgia. Funded by the P I M.
Recommended.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
No.
Okay, Mr. Harley, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Dr. Price, any questions, comments, concerns?
Again, this, just like the other one, this is a, is required, is required for the grant to take that trade.
Any comments, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose has the same right. Motion carries. Page seven, I approved request for fifth and seventh grades to attend the first day STEM adventure. Fifth grade is February twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. Seventh grade is March fifth and sixth, in Pennsylvania, Florida. Fund will be by Milwaukee, Martin Wreck, Loxton, Fuzz, and General Fund.
I recommend.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
No.
Okay, next, is there a second? Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose has the same right. Okay, motion carries. Item seven, J, approved request to not students under transfer request.
I recommend they be approved for the spread.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion? Reverend Green, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Kett, any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay. Motion carries. Okay, item eight, A, this is personnel. Item eight, A, accept resignation or ring appointment, nurse and vice, Doctor Zell. You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
No.
Reverend Green. Okay, second. Okay, Dr. Price, questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay. Motion carries. Eight, B, accept resignation of Dawn Hartoff, fourth grade teacher, motion to leave school, protective order.
Recommended.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
No.
Okay, Mr. Harley, second? Mr. Wilks, questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose has the same right. Motion carries. Eight, C, accept resignation of Shafail Davis, plus Rock, Doctor Zell.
I recommend.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
No.
Okay, Mrs. Kett, second?
Second.
Me.
Okay, any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay. Motion carries. Item eight, D, approved request to employ Dale Webb, plus Rock, Doctor Zell.
I recommend.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion? Okay, Mr. Wilks, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Kett, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose has the same right. Motion carries. Item eight, E, approved request to employ Elise Jones, C N P worker, high caliber student.
Recommended.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion? Okay, Mrs. Kett, is there a second? Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay. Motion carries. Eight, F, approved request for Katie Lindsay, nurse and vice.
Recommended.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
No.
Okay, Mr. Harley, is there a second? Five, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose has the same right. Motion carries. Item eight, G, approved request for Ashley Simpson, two words, C, the Cal for the other, uh, Canada Excuse me, and the background shift.
I recommend.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
No.
Okay, Mrs. Kett, second? Mr. Wilks, any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose has the same right. Motion carries. Item eight, H, crew teams contract for Long Floyd, I shout out to. You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion? Reverend Green, second? Second. Agent Harley, any questions, comments, concerns?
Just want to mention, he, he's been hired previously, but we specified specifically that his initial hiring was a team's, he was a team's contract person.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay. There are motion carries. Item number nine.
We do need, we do need an executive session to discuss an issue involving the use of the purchase or sale of a plan and pending legal matter.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation, okay? Reverend Green, is there a second? Okay, Mr. Harley. Call him, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose has the same right. Motion carries. Okay, I can vote now in the deposition.
Ethan God, we thank you so much for this night and we thank you more for just keeping us. Most of all, we ask that you would bless our school system and give us a mind to try to do what is right for our system. Not only do bad, but we ask that you would bless Sec and Cheryn all over this land and country in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend.
Item number three, except the minutes of January fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Recommended being approved. You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
I move.
Okay, Reverend Green, is there a second? Dr. Price, any comment? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose is nay. Motion carries. Item number four, hearing of dedication and communications. At this time, if anyone in the audience would like to say something, I have something to say, you can do so at this time. Hearing none, that was it.
A number of items under communications. One, I think I sent everybody an email regarding the two point six million dollar P I M grant that we received. I'm gonna ask Mr. Knox and Dr. Ridge to come in the March meeting and present the details on that, but that's gonna, that's a, that's a very, very good grant for our school system. And so they'll come and present that, we're excited about, about what that's gonna do to some of our programs. One, you may remember that prior to COVID, we were approved for us to have what we call a Pike County homeschool consortium. And that was advised to reach out to homeschoolers and try to bring them into our system and let them know what services are available to their, to their kids. We had some success at that time and actually some of the, some of the kids that we made contact with actually, once they, once they had a taste of our system, actually liked it and made actually be capable of times students with us over time. So we, we brought that back, we've kind of rebranded it under something called Connect Pike County or Pike County Connects. And we had two meetings last week and I believe the first, the first night, we had three homeschoolers there and the second night, there was nine. So we don't, we don't know whether any of those parents will make a decision to put their kids in our school system, but we have reached out to them. As you know, the legislative session has started and we, as always, we need to be attentive to what's going on in Montgomery. Of course, the big thing right now is the, is the choice bill and I have not had an opportunity to read the entire bill yet. I have had other superintendents email me about certain revisions of the bill that are of concern and I'm sure that A A S, the S S A, A E A class and all the different groups will work to try to, if it's going to pass it, we at least hope that some of those issues that are of concern are, are addressed in the language of the bill. There's also a, looks like there's going to be an opportunity for a gambling or lottery bill to pass this session that would give Alabama voters a chance to either give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down. And as you know, we've worked very hard over the last two or three years to get some very specific language in that bill that will, will direct some of the proceeds from that gambling bill, lottery bill to George, post-secondary dual enrollment not covered by workforce development funds. And so we had some success the last time we actually got our language in the bill with help of Senator Chastain and Senator Hawley at that time. And we'll redo double our efforts to try to get, get some of that language included. If a bill passes, we've already, I've actually already started making some contacts related to that. Do want to mention that the discretionary money that Representative Paramore or Senator Carlin sent to us has been distributed to the schools and, and we just set aside just a little bit of money for our, some of our academy students, those in the International Studies Program of Troy University to participate in international travel. That's one of the things we thought was important. Part of the International Studies Academy was to give the kids a chance to travel and we'll give you some more details on that. It looks like it could be Puerto Rico, is that right? We're, we're working on that and we'll give you some more details on that. Uh, we're, we're working on that, and we'll give you more details, so, um, you had in your package, uh, uh, A A S B snapshot, you're familiar with those, uh, uh, just to let you know, the M O U's for the music industry, performance-based music industry program has been signed with Troy University, I believe.
They've given us a ten.
Yeah, so, um, uh, it looks like that program is going to be a go, and, uh, the unanswered questions right now relating to the music industry program is the, is where, and what the schedule's gonna work, it's gonna look like, and, uh, uh, we're going to work on, we're gonna work on that. Uh, we had a very productive meeting, uh, I guess it was last week, uh, with Troy University on the three plus one teacher education, uh, uh, program, and it looks like that's going to be something that happens, we're excited about it, it'll give us an opportunity to put, get kids to an associate degree, uh, in tenth, eleventh, twelfth, then transition into a, uh, bachelor's program, we believe that is basically one year, and then a year after that, and it would be a year-long apprenticeship program, and then, uh, in, in return for us, um, helping them through that program post-graduation, um, if we choose to offer them a position in our school system, then they would be obligated to us, uh, we haven't decided how many years yet, but, kind of like what hospitals do to nurses now, you got them to get through, uh, a program, and then, and you're obligated to work at their facility, so, we think it's gonna, it's, it's, has, uh, is a program that can be replicated in other places, and, uh, it looks like it might end up being one of three or four pathways that is gonna lead to, to address teacher, uh, teacher shortages, one, you know, is a junior college program that's in the works, and the other is our, uh, early childhood apprenticeship program due to the Alabama Office of Apprenticeship, and this would give us a third one, but, and again, it'd be specific to our school system, so, we're excited about that program. Um, you have an email encouraging you to register and sign up for one of the A A S B legislative advocacy days, and, um, I don't remember the date that District, District Three is, is going to Montgomery, but I would encourage you to sign up for one of these days and, and make a trip, what day is it? District Three, April second, April second is District Three along with some other districts, uh, yeah, on, in April seventeenth. I encourage you to sign up to go and, uh, and participate in that, and take the time to go to the State House, and visit with Senator Carlin, and visit with Representative Perry Moore, they need to, they need to hear from you as it relates to issues involving our school system. Uh, you know, they, I, I get a chance to talk to them off and on, and they probably get tired of hearing from me sometimes, so, and it's good for them to hear, hear from you, uh, so please take the time to sign up and go. I'll mention that on March first and second, we're having our very own first annual teacher recruitment fair here, Friday and Saturday, uh, we've got a structure in place for, for candidates for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year to apply, and we're gonna have everybody there to conduct interviews, it's gonna be kind of a rotating thing, and, um, and, uh, anything we can do to kind of get a jump on, uh, people that are out there. Uh, you have a pen, and you're packing it in a little bag in your packet, uh, recognizing that this year is A A S B seventy-fifth anniversary. I think that, I think that's, oh, 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 I do, yeah, you have in your packet the, uh, taxes, tax sheet that you get every board meeting that gives you a rundown on what, uh, collections look like, and, uh, last but not the least, we have got to go ahead and schedule a whole board training. What is, what is, what is the wishes of the board as it relates to whole board training?
Because we have to coordinate dates with them and with us, so, I need to know, like, what area you want to do, so I can call them and see, it has to be done before you go in June, or it has to be done by the end of May, I think.
Aprilish?
So I need to know which categories.
How many hours?
Do we have that somewhere this time, like we did last month, Cindy?
I think I'll put it in your.
It's an hour.
How many hours is that?
I think it's six.
Six hours?
I think so. No, the, no, the whole board is like two hours.
Two hours?
Two hours, but it's made in the board.
Yeah, okay, do you, do you remember it last year? It's probably a free one. What, what, can we look up when we did it last year?
Uh, yeah, it was March April.
It was in May, I was actually in May.
This is our list.
Actually, yes, so that's what I need to know tonight, so I can call them, they have to be available, and we have to be in there.
You wanna, you wanna look at, maybe at, uh, three o'clock before, uh, April meeting, and, or two, and then, and then we'll, uh, bring a sandwich or something, and then go straight into the party. And then it's one night. What is it?
I think it's the fifteenth.
April fifteenth?
I think that's the third month.
Third month?
Yeah, April fifteenth, or twenty-second.
Uh, take a look at your topics and maybe pick three and rank them, pick three, rank them one, two, three, and then we'll, 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 uh, look and see what the most favorite, uh, topic is, and we will schedule that three o'clock, April fifteenth, in advance of the April fifteenth, fourteenth, is that okay? Is that okay? Would that be okay?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
If you just, like I said, if you just put numbers, uh, do it on that sheet, give it to Cindy, or you can email it, and then we'll schedule it.
After our numbers.
Okay, all right, that's all I have.
Item number five, adoption of the agenda.
Recommend.
You've heard the recommendations, very much. Price, second? Second, Willing, comments? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposing staff say aye. Motion carries. That's our item number six. Item seven, eight, approved financial statements for January twenty twenty-four, Dr. Zell.
Recommend.
You've heard the recommendations, is there a motion? Mr. Wills, is that second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. K, any questions come in, second service? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposing staff say aye. Motion carries. Item seven B, approved policy five point, number one, A I policy, Dr. Zell.
Recommend.
You've heard the recommendations, is there a motion? Okay, Dr. Price, is there a second?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Harley, any questions come in, second service? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposing staff say aye. Motion carries. Item seven C, approved request for Kim Holmes to travel to and attend the school psychometrist training, while the autism diagnosis observation scales at two, February twenty-sixth, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four in Alabazia, Florida, fund will be by S, Dr. Zell.
Recommend.
You've heard the recommendations, is there a motion?
No.
Name is Janet. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Wills, any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposing staff say aye. Motion carries. Item seven D, approved request for Daniel Reed to travel to and attend the psychop, security conference, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four in Alabama, Alabama, fund will be by the Alabama State Department of Education.
Recommend.
You've heard the recommendations, is there a motion?
No.
Okay, Mr. Harley, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Willing, any questions come in, second service? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposing staff say aye. Motion carries. Seven E, approved request for Monica Hertz to travel to and attend the Alabama Council for Administrative Special Education Spring Conference, this is February twenty-fifth through twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four in Birmingham, funding by I D.
I recommend.
You've heard the recommendations, is there a motion? Okay, Dr. Price, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Wills, any questions, come in, second service? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposing staff say aye. Motion carries. Item seven F, approved request for Colleen Ewing, Kristen Stanley, and Jerry Knox to travel to and attend the forum camp training, May fifteenth through nineteen, twenty twenty-four in Boston, Massachusetts, funded by the school innovation grant, Dr. Zell.
I recommend.
You've heard the recommendations, is there a motion?
No.
Okay, Willing, is there a second? Okay, Mr. Harley, any questions, come in, second service?
Isn't that a requirement for the grade? Just serves for the, um, fright form that we're getting up there, sort of trying to learn how to run it.
They know about Colleen and Post.
It's work, it's work, mate, I got it.
Patriots.
Break it back to Clamshell.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposing staff say aye. Motion carries. Okay, seven G, approved request for Natasha Leverett, Beverly Williamson, Jerry Knox to travel to and attend the Alabama Apprenticeship Conference, April eight through the tenth, twenty twenty-four, Birmingham, apprenticeship program will be presented by Title V and Apprenticeship Funds, Dr. Zell.
Recommend.
Okay, you've heard the recommendations, is there a motion?
No.
Okay, Mr. Wills, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, okay, any questions come in, second service? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposing staff say aye. Motion carries. Item seven H, approved request for Jerry Knox to travel to and attend the Association of Women Technical Education Work-Based Apprenticeship Conference, April thirty through May thirty, twenty twenty-four in Milwaukee Council, funded by the P I M grant.
Recommend.
You've heard the recommendations, is there a motion?
No.
Okay, Mr. Harley, is there a second? Second, okay, Dr. Price, any questions come in, second service?
Again, this is like the other one, this is a, it's required, uh, it's required for the grant to take that trade.
Any other comments? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposing staff say aye. Motion carries. Item seven, I approve request for children of seventh grades to attend the first state STEM venture, fifth grade February twenty seventh and twenty-eight, seventh grade is March fifth and sixth, in Tuscaloosa, Florida, fund will be by Milwaukee Martin Grant, Luch and Funds and the General Fund.
Recommend.
You've heard the recommendations, is there a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, second, is there a second? Any questions? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposing staff say aye. Okay, motion carries. Item seventy-eight, approved request for students to attend transfer requests.
I recommend they be approved, they're designed for the spreadsheet.
You've heard the recommendations, is there a motion? Willing, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. K, any questions, comments? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposing staff say aye. Motion carries. Okay, item eight A, this is personnel. Item eight A, accept recommendation of rank appointment, nurse advantage. You've heard the recommendations, is there a motion?
No.
Mr. Will, is there a second? Okay, Dr. Price, questions come in, second service? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposing staff say aye. Motion carries. Item B, accept resignation of Dawn Parton, fourth grade teacher, Ocean Valley Middle School, protective, third ward, fund.
Recommend.
You've heard the recommendations, is there a motion?
No.
Okay, Mr. Harley, second? Mr. Wills, questions? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposing staff say aye. Motion carries. AC, accept resignation of Shafail Davis, Bus Drop, Dr. Zell.
Recommend.
You've heard the recommendations, is there a motion?
No.
Okay, Mrs. K, second? Second? Willing, okay, any questions come in, second service? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposing staff say aye. Motion carries. Item eight D, approved request to employ Dale Weir, Bus Drop, Dr. Zell.
Recommend.
You've heard the recommendations, is there a motion? Okay, Mr. Wills, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. K, any questions? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposing staff say aye. Motion carries. Item eight E, approved request to employ Elise Jones, C N P worker, high school.
Recommend.
Heard the recommendations, is there a motion? Okay, Mrs. K, is there a second?
Willing.
Any questions come in, second service? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposing staff say aye. Motion carries. Item F, approved request for Katie Lindsay, nurse advantage.
Recommend.
You've heard the recommendations, is there a motion?
No.
Okay, Mr. Harley, is there a second? Okay, Dr. Price, any questions? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposing staff say aye. Motion carries. Item eight G, approved request to employ Ashley Simpson, two words, C, the Cal through the, uh, Calis Fusion, pending background check.
Recommend.
Okay, you've heard the recommendations, is there a motion?
No.
Okay, Mrs. K, second, Mr. Wills, any questions, come in, second service? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposing staff say aye. Motion carries. Item eight H, approved teams contract for Long Florida, high school. You've heard the recommendations, is there a motion? Okay, Willing, second, second, Mr. Harley, any questions come in, second service?
Just want to mention, he, he's been hired previously, but, uh, we had specified specifically that his initial hiring was a team's, he was your team's contract person.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposing staff say aye. Motion carries. Item number nine.
We did need, uh, we did need an executive session to discuss an issue involving the themes of the purchase or sale of land and attending legal matter.
Okay, you've heard the recommendations, okay, Willing, is there a second? Okay, Mr. Harley, okay, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposing staff say aye. Motion carries. Okay, I can vote now in a different session.